...of the Kattati City Council and success to their agency, to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency on this Tuesday, August 11th, 2015. We've just come back from closed session, but we're going to need to resume that at the end of the meeting, so we have nothing to report out. And I would ask for a roll call.
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Delasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Councilmember Landman?
Here.
All present. Thank you. Now, if you could join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, I'll move on to approval of minutes and notice of waiving while reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and are adopted under this agenda for our meeting on July 28th.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, may the record show that that is a five oh vote in favor of approval. Now, I'll move on to housekeeping items. Portia, will turn to the city clerk.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, we ask that we all please observe the following: silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table outside, just inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the, on the desk by the, by the city clerk, and when their name is called, please, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Barich.
Good evening, council. For the members, for the benefit of the people at home watching and the people here in the audience tonight, I'm former Kattati City Councilman George Barich, and I'd like to speak on this item of housekeeping items. I want you to first realize that, I guess, for the first time tonight in our agenda packet, it says "housekeeping items," but the housekeeping items are not even spelled out anymore. That aside, the fact is, the public needs to know that for some time, I've been arguing that the city has no housekeeping rules, it has no housekeeping items, the city has never passed or put forth any housekeeping rules for this chamber or for the public to follow. And unlike other cities in the state of California, where they put forth policies for public comment, for public conduct, and so forth, they, they vet them before the public, they discuss them like city leaders, they debate the issue, they open the issue up for public comment, and then they vote on it. But that's not how we do things in Kattati, and I've been arguing this for a couple years now. All I've asked is for the city council to do the right thing, which is follow proper procedure and try to act like you know what you're doing when you enforce or put forth a policy such as housekeeping rules and so forth. I would ask you to first find out where these rules that you've come up with, where did they originate? From behind closed doors? In secrecy? Let's find that out first. Then, put it on the agenda so we can have a healthy discussion about it, we can vote on it, then, and every so often, you can review the rules and see how well they're working for you. But for the time being, we see that you're asking the public to fill out a public speaker's card. That's illegal. It's against the law, according to the Brown Act. You are all in violation of California's Brown Act for requiring members of the public to fill out a speaker's card in order to address their local government. You're in constant violation of this. We have asked the council numerous times to please clarify that speaker cards are purely optional, optional, and that it is the public's right, under the laws of California, that if a citizen wants to remain anonymous, he or she should be able to do so. The speaker cards are unnecessary, they're a waste of paper, and I would ask you to please follow the law. Also, the fact that I do find it disturbing that we've asked Tammy Taylor, our wonderful city clerk, to read these rules, or lack of rules, because the city council doesn't have the decency and the guts to read them out yourselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have comments on the housekeeping items? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open-for-Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Roner Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati Community Alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com. The Anna Bonanza Rock the Park Festival is on August 16th in La Plaza Park. Free admission, and all proceeds will be donated to Committee on the Shelterless and Neighborhood Organizations Against Hunger Organizations, oh, sorry, Neighbors Organized Against Hunger Organizations. And lastly, Kattati's annual accordion festival takes place on August 22nd and 23rd in La Plaza Park, and the Kattati Lions Club will be hosting their annual two-day pancake breakfast to coincide with the accordion festival. Now, move on to presentations. We have presentation today on current status of 2015 water conservation, and from my short preview, Kattati's doing pretty darn well. So, I'll turn it over to our city managers.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, we are only in the first month, finishing the first month of, and going into the second month of the state's drought, emergency drought, and as we get a little farther into it, I'll have some graphics and some things to share, once we have a little bit of a trend. But, right now, I just wanted to report back to the council that in the month of June, we hit our 20% overall conservation goal, and that's compared to 2013, which, as you recall, was, wasn't exactly a wet year either. So, we'd already been saving as a city in 2013, and now we're, we already met the 20% for, for June, and on top of that. And how that breaks down is we have, for our single-family homes, the ones that are, the ones that we have records on, so in other words, the ones that were here in 2013, some people change accounts between 2013 and now, so we can't compare the prior account holders to the current account holders, but for the people that had accounts in 2013 and have accounts today, they achieved, single-family homes achieved an overall reduction of 52% compared to 2013, which is pretty mind-boggling. It's a lot of water. And that represents, represents about 85% of the single-family homes, so about 15% of them weren't account holders in 2013, right? So, 85% were. And, and about 76%, about three-quarters of the, of our customers were compliant with a 20% requirement, so. It's all, it's all good news, you know, that our customers in Kattati have been doing an outstanding job of saving water so far this year.
Great, thank you for that.
Can we ask a question?
Sure.
If I could. I was curious if there was any data on commercial sites, or was it, because you'd mentioned residential, but were there any commercial data?
The commercial, I don't have specific reduction numbers yet, but as the year goes on, I will, I will have those for the other account classes. The savings weren't as dramatic in some of the other account classes, the multifamily and commercial. That's why the overall's 20%, but, single families are around 50%. So, everyone, I'm just looking at the data briefly for the other accounts, everyone's doing a good job, but certainly, the single-family accounts are, are doing a great job.
Yeah, and, and I think that's, that's, you know, great news and moving in the right direction, too, but I, when I think of, you know, trying to make a dent in something like water conservation, certainly homeowners, you know, there's more of, there's probably more square footage of front and backyards than in commercial spaces, but I always wonder what's going on with the commercial areas, even if it was just, say, in the industrial park, and, and I think of the public parks, too. I know we've reduced the amount of water we're using, which is great, and things look very green, you know? I see it at Putnam Park all the time, so things are good, but I was curious, even at that level, I don't know what that falls under, probably falls under public space or something like that, but I'd be kind of curious if there are any figures down the road. It'd be nice to hear some of those as well.
Sure. Yeah, as we get more of a trend, I'll be able to break out the account classes like that.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Landman.
Yeah, I'd just like to double-check. Obviously, we've had, been watching this closely, I think, everybody in the news, and one of the few disadvantages of being a smaller city is, in some of the initial counts, we weren't really part of the data, so we, I know a lot of us, I know, I've been sitting here wondering where we were going to fall out, and I just want to confirm, we are actually, I want to make sure I heard you right, 20% lower compared to 2013? That's amazing, because I think the biggest I've heard closest is, I think, Roner Park, 15.8, about 16%. So, we actually hit 20? Do we know what our average per capita use is in terms of gallons per day?
I, the data's available, I don't have it with me tonight.
Okay, just curious. That's, that's huge, considering we've had some pretty strong efforts in the community for water conservation for a long time to be able to hit that. That speaks to the people, so I think we all owe a thanks to the community for that big savings. That, that was a huge effort, and those are big numbers.
Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
Well, it's probably appropriate to bring this up at this point, since we're talking the water supplies. Basically, at the Water Agency meeting, they said that, in general, what we're doing is we're using water at the rate that we normally would in the winter time, which is really a good thing, and it, what has allowed us to do is to stay ahead of the curve, and at this point, Lake Sonoma's at 79%, and Lake Mendocino's at 60%, but really, people have really stepped it up to do what they can do to help, and, and Councilmember Delasso's right, there's still a little bit more work to do, especially with multifamily, and some of it comes down to, they don't really know what they're using, and so there, there, there needs to be more work there into how they can make people aware of what they're using, because most often, those have one meter, and it's really hard for people to, to really get their arms around that, so, anyways.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, or? Okay, and I already told Mr. Obed that we are going to have bragging rights at the next mayor and council meeting, since we already hit the 20%, at least with our residential, so I'm hanging on to that one. So, let's move on to approval, sorry. Certainly, we can open this up for public comment on the presentation on water conservation. Sure, Mr. Barich.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, I'd like to echo Mr. Landman's comments and give the public a healthy congratulations, and thanks to you with your efforts to encourage this water conservation. The citizens have met your call, and they've stepped up to the plate, and we hope we've made you proud. It's been a lot of work. It hasn't been with a lot, a lot of work and a lot of sacrifice, and I think you council members know what citizens have had to sacrifice and endure to reach that, 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 that water savings. However, I do want to clarify for the council that looks maybe deceiving. When you look at the public parks and you look at the landscape around town, just because it's green, does not mean things are healthy. There are a lot of people's gardens in their backyard that they've let their gardens go this year. There's a lot of trees that are very stressed out right, right now. We have over 40 redwood trees over in my housing development that we haven't watered for the last couple of years. They're showing serious signs of stress, and some trees don't show the stress as well as others, so there's a price to be paid here. And although it's been a gallant effort on behalf, behalf of the city to, to try to, to meet the governor's goal for these reductions and so forth, the citizens need to be wholeheartedly congratulated, and even though there is more work to be done, the fact is, it's been a great sacrifice, and, and I'd like to applaud the, the public as well.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment? Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening. It's good to hear about the water and the way it's going. I, I would like to put in a plea that these presentations also get included in the, the staff report, because it's very nice to be able to go back and have a look at it, and also look at it beforehand in the meeting, so I appreciate the work that's actually going on and where we are with the data. I mean, I think there's a lot of other discussion that I also would like to see happen for the future water side of things, the AMR reading systems that we're looking at, the automatic reading system, so we have, we have potential in there, and we need to sort of look at those as well and have a, have a solid base for being able to analyze that data. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the presentation? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes.
All right, thank you. So, next, we have citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. And I have a couple of speaker cards, and I appreciate it, since we just requested they're filled out, because it helps me out a lot.
Over the last few weeks, I've come to realize a few things, mostly that the city council, staff, and police have forgotten whom these chambers belong to. They belong to the citizens, they belong to the citizens of Kattati like me. Citizens like me, who have lived here before you, came and will remain here long after you all are gone. This is a public meeting where citizens like me are supposed to be heard. All these meetings have become our city staff-to-city council approval meetings. It doesn't matter whether we citizens are here anymore, as we are not heard at all. You all do as you please, no matter what the cost is to others. Laws, codes, and regulations are applied unequally in this city, depending on who you know. The city has all the appearances of being efficient, fair, and doing what is best for all. This is not the reality, especially with how you have treated the situation with my family, of that we are not at fault one bit. You all have been cruel, hurtful, and continually traumatized my family for over 13 months now. From day one, the city has not done one legal action. Every action has been illegal or improper. I'm sick of this, other good citizens are sick of this. You all need to change and do it quick. If not, most of you, when all is known, will be looking for new positions in life.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment during citizens' business? Yes, Mr. Barich.
Thank you. I'd like to address a comment made by Mr. Moore at the last meeting, that there are citizens who have filed frivolous lawsuits against the city. I know one way to stop lawsuits against Kattati. Say you're sorry when you screw up. That's all you have to do. It's pretty easy, but you folks can't seem to do that. You double down and make matters worse in the newspapers, attacking my manhood and calling me a liar. To call any citizen's complaints or lawsuit against this city frivolous is cowardly and desperate, Mr. Moore. This council has engaged in serious overreach and blatant illegal activities over the years, that's a fact. You brought this lawsuit on yourself, Mr. Moore. Instead of acting like a city leader and diffusing the situation, you went into the local bar and you, and you, and you had a few. Mr. Moore, lawsuits are what happens when you lie, you cover up, you fail to apologize for injuring people. You surely have money in the budget to bully and litigate against citizens and against local businesses, so I would stop your whining. To the Marxist, every lawsuit against the city is frivolous. If you know your political theory, that's a fact. To the Marxist, the state can do no wrong. We are all here for the benefit, benefit and betterment of the, of the state. Isn't that true, Mr. Moore? When you recall honest council members for doing their job, you don't make friends, Mr. Moore. When you pass them over twice for appointment, you don't make friends. When you use the police to silence your critics, haul them outside, expect a lawsuit. Civil rights matter. When you love people, you intervene. Sometimes, when the city fails to protect the citizens, they violate people's rights. Citizens have to file lawsuits to bring about real hope and change and real service to the community. Goes on everywhere across this country. Then you pay off people like Diane Thompson to avoid litigation. Was that frivolous, too, Mr. Moore? Yeah, just watch the clock, don't watch me. Thank God that God has given me the ability to stand up to such evil and contempt. This jihad that you have waged against the citizens of this community and free speech in this chamber is frankly disgusting.
Thank you for that. And I believe, actually, I was the one quoted in the newspaper, but I'll take it under advisement. Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, council. I appreciate the rules that you put forward to try and make this a fair place. I can speak personally that Mr. Barich has slandered me, he has made up stories, and he has published them in his rag when he was Barich interviewing Barich, so I really find that Mr. Barich's comments up here are disingenuous. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment during citizens' business? All right, seeing none, I will close citizens' business. I'll move on to direction of future agenda items. Does anybody have any agenda items that they would like to add to? Not tonight? Okay, thank you. Did you?
Mayor Skilman, yes. There was a time a while back that there was a group of citizens that presented to the council temporary sleeping in car.
The safe, safe parking program?
Safe parking program. Are we going to be looking at that before the winter weather comes in? I mean, would that be something that we might want to consider prior to November, October, November?
It's, it is on the future calendar, agenda calendar, right now. And we're assessing what's going on regionally with the other cities and how they're looking at it, before we lead the charge on that.
I had, I had come across some notes on that, and I just wanted to, wanted us to keep it in the forefront before we went through another season. Thank you.
Certainly, and I've been in touch with Georgia Berland, who is the head of the homeless committee, so she's been very helpful. All right, so now, we'll move on to consent calendar items. We've got items four, five, and six, and I do have a speaker card, so before we go on to any motions, I will open it up for public comment. Item number four is approval of 2015 Kattati Accordion Festival and associated street closures. Item five is replacement of police motorcycle for traffic enforcement, and item number six is data watch service agreement with KLH Consulting Incorporated, and I have a speaker card from Mr. Hammond, sorry, Hancock. See what happens when I read too quickly? On item number six.
Yes, thank you, council. I'm up here this evening quite frequently on this, but on item number six, I think it looks very good, and this is the data watch services agreement. It's good to see that the actual, that we're getting this, this is upfront and is visible for cyber infrastructure. I would like to ask on this, is there a point person within the city staff who's also responsible for the cyber infrastructure? That's not to say they have to know everything about it, but when you have an outside series of consultants, they can be the brains, but you've still got to develop talent inside. Now, there's been a recent report at the federal level to say that there's not enough cyber experts within the federal government, and we all know what's happened there. I mean, I've had my emails stolen from a federal government database, and I, it's the biggest area of spam that I get. There's lots of breaches that we've seen recently, and development of in-house knowledge, just how it works. California is the center of a lot of this internet, cyber, knowledge on how things work. We have O'Reilly Books, who puts out a lot of literature. We have this agreement, which I think is a very good one, but I would ask again, you know, is there a person, is there a point person within the staff who's going to be responsible for this? If things come up, they can actually take the, the lead within the city of it. There is also an upgrade on the internet coming along. Because of all these issues, there's going to be a forklift, literally another layer put into the foundations of the internet, and people are going to have to understand what that means for their particular organization. So, I think it would be a very good point to develop the experience, the, the expertise within the city as well, if possible. So, thank you very much, that's just my question, all right?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barich. Is that on item six, or just?
Six.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Well, once again, let me say that I don't believe anything that Mr., Mr. Hancock says.
Well, let's stick to item six.
Yeah, but that's fine. He made comments about me, ma'am, if you remember. That, that's fair. Thank you. So, anyway, regarding item six, we're going to spend $50,000 in consulting fees for nine months. $50,000 to secure your network. That seems like an awful lot of money. Were there any competing bids? This is a huge amount of money. We've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on our network, on infrastructure over the years. Software's had to be replaced. Software's had to be replaced again. We have staff members who've been unhappy with the software, so we've brought in new This is a lot of money for nine months. It smacks that something's wrong here. To secure your network?
Oh, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who wanted to comment on four, five, or six on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council, see if there are any questions or comments from council.
I would ask staff one question, because it piqued my curiosity. I believe we do have some people with some background that's appropriate. We have a designated point person, and so I wonder if you could just give us a little brief background on their expertise.
So, at the city, our designated point person is our admin services director, Norm He, you know, is typical with a small city, he would administer the consultant, and he's the gatekeeper for their, you know, for their services and their work, and so he's the one that's tasked with understanding what they're doing and why they're doing it, and understanding the state of our network, so that, you know, like any service, any consulting service, you make sure that you need what you're getting, and, you know, they're not just running unmanaged. So, but Norm is the one that's the point person on that.
And one last question related to the same thing, it was suggested, this is just to maintain the network. My understanding and reading this is actually, we're talking about a full slew of services, including maintaining the network, but also upgrading of software, basically full-level maintenance.
It's, it's basically, you're right, it's, it's a contract IT service, so it's everything.
And that takes me to my last question, and this might be a difficult one to answer, but I'm looking, we have a, we have an enterprise here, just a general fund, and we're talking about 20 million, we're looking at 7,000 people in the city, and we're running this enterprise for 50,000 for a year. Everybody at home knows how expensive keeping their computers up and running is. I'm curious what having an actual brick and mortar. I'm curious what having an actual brick and mortar IT department would likely cost for a community in our size. I'm sure there's a full-time person, and I'm sure that person doesn't come inexpensively.
Yeah.
Has to take a guess at that? I'm guessing you could safely say it'd be a lot more than 50K.
Yeah, easily.
So obviously, they'd be onsite, and it might be a tiny bit quicker, but I would guess there's a lot of savings here.
A full-time IT person would easily exceed $100,000.
I would imagine so. So I just wanted to tease that point out. It's obviously pretty obvious to most of us, but it's a good one to make. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
Sorry, along the same lines, how was this agency chosen? Assuming that there was a bid process that I buy to select this company?
Yeah, so I can answer it in a couple ways. The first is that IT company, there was a solicitation for IT companies, and K L H was the most qualified. And we've used them for about a year for some of the upgrade, IT upgrade projects we've done, and then some on-call work. And so this is just formalizing what had been kind of an on-call and project-based contract work. And at the end of this fiscal year, the reason why the duration is the end of the fiscal year, we're going to evaluate the contract and how it's going, and, you know, if we want to renew for another year, or if we want to, you know, after we've been using them as an IT support contractor, if we want to go back out to bid again. Just depends on the level of service that we get and if we're getting what we're paying for.
And I would concur with Councilmember Landman. IT services are not inexpensive, and $50,000 for IT services is really a bargain. Having worked with various companies for IT services, most of those things run in the millions of dollars, and IT professionals easily are over $100,000 per person. And with this contract, it sounds like we get expertise of multiple people depending upon what we specifically need. So I looked at this, and I view this as a pretty good deal for us. Agreed, as you said, depending upon the service. And I think that this gives us an opportunity to check out their service.
That's, yeah, that's correct. And I would point out that it's, we also in this contract are able to make, they threw it, because we've worked with them a little bit, they gave us unlimited help calls, so you can call their help desk, and they can remotely diagnose things, because IT companies have that ability these days, apparently. And so that's an unlimited amount of that. And also, there's actually onsite time built into the agreement that if you don't use all the hours in one month, it'll roll into, you know, kind of like your cellphone minutes will roll into the next month. As, you know, as well as a whole bunch of other related services, virus, spam blocking, just network administration generally, and all the upgrades and patches and everything goes along with that.
Okay, great, thank you. And any other? Okay, I think we got well covered. So I'll just ask if there's a motion on the consent calendar items. Move to approve the consent calendar, item four, five, and six?
Yeah, seconded.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record show that that is a 5-0 vote in favor of items four, five, and six on the consent calendar. Now I'll move forward to public hearings. Item number seven, consideration of objections to report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding in adoption of a resolution approving itemized reports sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessments. So I didn't know if anybody was here, but I'll turn it over to City Manager Obid.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item is an annual item. We have some sewer-only accounts, they don't have water connections attached to them. So we, as a matter of course, we bill them every two months like we would any other account. And it's fairly routine that every year we have about two or three accounts, in this case, two accounts, that just don't pay the bills. And so this is how we pay the bills for the sewer accounts that use our sewer services during the year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to Council. Are there any comments or questions for staff at this point? Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
Are these recurrent accounts from previous years?
You know, these, I didn't look this year, but in prior years, there tends to be one or two that are recurrent.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Council? All right, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on item number seven? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
If there's no comments, I'd move to adopt a resolution approving itemized report of sewer charges and penalties outstanding and directing levying of assessment for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect that's a 5-0 vote in favor of item seven. And move on to item eight, establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and levying of assessments for fiscal year 2015, 2016. And again, I will turn to City Manager Obid.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item, again, is a reoccurring annual exercise that we go through. And this is for backflow devices, which are the devices that are put on some water customers' connections, particularly if they're commercial or if they're irrigations that the water, or if they have like a well or a water source onsite. So the water from their property, private property, doesn't backflow into the public water system. So the backflow device protects the public water system from potentially contaminated water. And under Cattati municipal code as well as state law, these backflow devices need to be tested annually to ensure that they operate properly. And every year, we send out notices to all of our customers that have backflow devices and informing them that they need to test. A lot of people do test their own devices and send the reports in. Some people opt not to do their own tests and have the city test it for them. And then after the city tests the device for them, then we send them a bill for the testing and any repairs that would be necessary. And then a subset of those people don't end up actually paying the bill for the testing that we do. And so that's what's listed here, these seven properties. These are properties that we tested, and there's one in there that's a higher number, that's because we repaired the backflow device. And in order to pay these delinquent charges, we do this every year to assess the property. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to Council. Are there any questions or comments on this item? Yes, Councilmember Veloso.
I have a couple of questions on this, if I could. Do you have the number in your head of how many backflow devices we have in the city? I don't remember that from previous year reports. No, and if you don't, that's fine. I was just kind of curious percentage-wise, is this like a small percentile or, you know, half of them? You don't know, you don't have to know.
Yeah, I don't know, but it's a relatively small percent.
This is a small percent of people.
A relative, yeah, the backflow devices, yes.
And these are annual charges, are they not?
These are annual testing costs.
And I know you responded, when I saw that $400 charge, you know, it was grossly larger than those other charges, but you said there was repairs to it, which I didn't pick up in the report, but that's what you said the difference was?
Yeah, so the $69 would be a typical repair and documentation and reporting on the testing of the backflow device. And the $400 is, the only reason why it would be more than 69 is because something wasn't functioning properly. And so our tester had to then repair things on the backflow device.
All right, thank you.
Are there any comments or questions beyond that? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on item eight? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Assuming there is no other discussion, because everybody's looking down at the table. I was going to make a motion, okay. Move to approve resolution establishing the outstanding backflow testing charges and directing the levying of assessments for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please show the record. I keep going into court mode. May the record please reflect that that was a 5-0 vote in favor of item number eight. Now move on to item nine, public hearing for establishing landscape and lighting maintenance assessment district rates. And again, I will turn it over to our one-man show, City Manager Obid.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this item is lighting and landscape maintenance assessment districts. In the city of Cattati, we have 10 such districts. Most of them, nine of the 10, are lighting and landscape districts. One of them, Sierra Meadows on Oretzky, is a lighting assessment district only. There's no landscaping that we maintain there. And the proposed assessments in each one of these cases are, have not changed from the prior year, so they're the same as last year. And they're all structured so that they don't require any general fund subsidy. The one new thing in this, that happened in this past year, and we'll, of course, roll into this next year, is, as the council will recall, we entered into a new landscape contract with a contractor by the name of PJM. And the, some of the maintenance work in some of these districts actually turned out to be more advantageous than our prior landscaper. So in some of the ones that are, you'll notice on the table in the staff report, there's the listing there that says if it allows for inflationary adjustment or not. And basically, any of the districts before 2001 didn't allow for any sort of inflationary adjustment. So the assessment was set in the year of formation, and then it's been, you know, set like that forever, basically, unless the people within that district vote to change their assessment. And historically, we've been struggling with, especially some of the older districts, to be able to do the landscape maintenance and pay the water bill and the electric bills with the limited amount of assessment money that was collected. With the new landscape contractor that we have, we've actually been able to stretch the dollar a lot farther, so that's good news in some of these districts. And like I said earlier, we're not going to need to use any general fund money for any of these districts, as has been the past practice, that we don't use general fund money, that we only use assessment money within the assessment district. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The one thing I will point out, though, is that when we get to the resolutions, I believe we need to have motions and adopt them individually. This is that annual process with also resolutions.
Okay. All right, so I'll bring it back to Council. Are there any questions or comments for staff at this point? Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
We've discussed this, I know, a couple of times about these maintenance districts and the need for some of them because they are older and they really are looking a little bit shabby. Have we approached the folks in these districts to see if they have any desire to change their maintenance or not?
Right, and so that's what we had talked about a while back. And when we entered into the new landscape agreement, some of our costs, in some cases, changed pretty significantly. And so as it stands right now with our landscape, at least with ongoing landscaping costs, plus the contract landscaping costs, plus the water costs, plus the electricity costs, as it stands right now, we can cover the regular maintenance with the amount assessed in all the districts, which wasn't the case with the prior, especially with the prior landscaper, because the cost structure was a little different with that prior contract landscaping. There still is the question of some of the outstanding, or some of the older districts that just haven't had new, haven't had bushes replaced or trees replaced in a long period of time. And that's an additional cost above and beyond the regular maintenance costs. And that's still something that we're talking with the landscape contractor about, to see if, hey, first of all, we could do some of that within the existing assessment that we have, and looking at what that looks like, and then potentially approaching the people in those districts at that point in time and saying, this is, you know, we can cover your service costs right now, but, you know, depending on what kind of, you know, infill of plants that you want, it may or may not be covered by the assessment. And then they can decide what they want to do.
So is it fair to say that when you get this assessment, that it's possible that there may be a one-time charge to kind of make an improvement for a period of time based upon some kind of a plan, rather than some of these other ones where there's a set inflationary amount? I mean, when I think about replacing things, those are one-time costs, not necessarily maintenance costs. So might that be part of the plan?
Well, so I think they could volunteer to, you know, outside of the assessment process, they could volunteer and maybe, you know, donate some money or something for some specific upgrade. In terms of the assessment, it wouldn't be that easy to tack on money into an assessment because they have to, you know, we'd have to, I think, redo the engineer's report, and they'd have to vote on it, and it's a bigger process then.
Because I know people periodically complain about those, and, you know, we need to have some form of an approach on these that are set, because when you look at some of these, we're talking ones that are, you know, from the 80s, and obviously, things have changed, you know, in that amount of time, so, but thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Veloso.
So every year, I go through this, and every year, I have concerns over the maintenance aspect of it. Now, I have seen improvements, which I think is great, but there's, you know, I think some kind of a strategic comprehensive look at, especially maybe some more of the major streets, I'm thinking of like Myrtle Avenue or Old Red, some of the more larger thorough fairs where these landscaping assessments are. If we're even going to consider, and I don't know if this should go through design review, planning, council, but even consider any kind of changing, you know, I think knowing what we know over the last four years, we should be looking at some drought tolerant species. There's, I almost said gazillions, but that probably wouldn't be appropriate, but there are many species to choose from out there. Many are native species, many aren't. I don't know that that matters too much, honestly. But, you know, what I've noticed in some areas where I've walked, where these districts are, the vegetation is well more than halfway out into the sidewalk. And, you know, two people can't walk side by side, for example, you can't walk a dog, everybody's got to go out in the street. So I've been concerned about that. I have seen some improvements, and it's something I'm going to keep looking at, obviously. And I have two specific questions on, under the total budget costs for these. And if I gave you the packet page number, would that be the easier reference to find these, since there's so many? So on page 133, which is the Park Meadows subdivision, there's a line item on all of these, there's multiple line items, but on all of these, the district reserve. And I think that, again, is packet page 133, and again, on packet page 143 for the Santero Way Development. If those two figures, which seem proportionally larger than the district reserve and all of the other ones, why there's such a large, and it's not that it's a large figure, but because it's broken out over multiple parcels, but why is that figure so much larger for those two?
So the other line items, like the utility charges and the landscape maintenance, those are actual costs.
Right.
So that's in, you know, the revenue comes in and the expenditure goes right back out, paying utility bills and landscape contractors. The district reserve is really doing exactly that, it's building a reserve. And then these two districts, in Santero and Park Meadows, they have more, just more stuff, you know, more fencing and more, you know, lighting and things that can break. And in any given year, you want to have some reserve so that you can be able to...
And I'm fine with that. I just, I couldn't, I just, I didn't see the rationale in the proportion of the figures for those two versus all the other districts, so that, I mean, that does make sense. But again, you know, I want to really emphasize that, and I know you guys will emphasize this to the landscape contractors, that, you know, they really need to, you know, there's two issues when it comes to doing any kind of shrub or tree maintenance, and that is, you know, there's a time of year where you shouldn't do it, and that's the bird nesting season, which is, I'd say typically kind of a mid-April through early to mid-August kind of date. And, I mean, for example, what we do is, we can't do anything, it seems crazy, but anything over eight inches tall, we can't cut during that time of year unless there's a bird survey done. Now, I do a lot of maintenance on the willows along Myrtle Avenue there at Putnam Park, but I go in, and there's no birds nesting there, but I go and look anyway, just to make sure there's not some little critter in there. So I would just, you know, I just emphasize a couple of things, and if it's not in the specs for this year, I think it should be, something that should be considered for future years. And again, also, just trying to keep the public paths open, you know, in the And again, also just trying to keep the, the public paths open, you know, in the different areas where it becomes an issue. In many cases, it's not at all an issue, but there's a couple of cases in these districts where it is. That's what I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Lehman.
Thank you, yeah. This little deja vu here, we've had this discussion a few times, and these are valid concerns, particularly with the pre-97 districts, assessment districts, that aren't rolling costs. And last time we went through this, we did bring out some good points, and it was Councilmember Deloso that pointed out quite rightly that looking at this, improvements were needed, and native plants would certainly be the smarter way to go. But what I wanted to check on and get an update was, I believe we had come to a general consensus that was going to, staff was going to take a look some point, perhaps this year, hopefully, at a one-time landscaping update for some of these pre-97 districts, just to solve some of this issue. Obviously, it would be ineffective and not dutiful use of the citizens' money to pay general funds on an ongoing basis to something that's not a rolling cost, but as a one-time improvement. And that might open the door if people are interested in supporting their neighborhood and a higher assessment fee. I think you're going to have a better shot at that if you have something good to start with. The condition of some of these things dating back to the eighties that don't have truly appropriate funding to maintain them, as ideal as they should for the way the rest of this city looks. I mean, most of the city is very well-kept. I think there'd be a lot of value in that. So I just wanted to see what's, where staff was on that.
So that was, yeah, there was a discussion at a prior council meeting, and it is, that particular item is on the long-range agenda. It just, just with workload and stuff, we haven't been able to get to that yet. But at, you know, at some point, we will be working with our landscape contractor, and then Vicki's busy writing over there, but Vicki will be involved in that.
Sure, if one time you need her, she's not here, I know. I, I think that's a great, and I think frankly, with all the other things, improvements, maintenance, and involvement in the city, it's good that we've had a little time because you're assessing a new setup and a new delivery service for this, it seems to be more cost-effective. So I think having the year and of seeing how that works and what extra we might have to work with to be able to use for this will be valuable. But I would hope that, even though it's on a long-term, it isn't too much farther in the future, because I think this would be a worthwhile thing to do. I think we'd be starting between the slate of work that you've set up as city manager for this year and the beginning of next. If you wrap that into it, I think we'll have the city in a very good footing in terms of infrastructure and things of that nature. So I'd look forward to seeing it.
Okay, thank you. So if we're concluding with our comments to the staff, then I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on item number nine? Yes, Mr. Berch.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate the council's more comprehensive discussion about this matter than maybe last year, but I would like to ask you all that, you know, if this has been a problem for you the last couple of years, then maybe the way you're going about it is a little wrong. And I, and I appreciate Mr. Deloso's concerns that this has been on his mind, and things aren't quite getting addressed the way he would like to, but, you know, let's, let's look at maybe changing our method a little bit. You know, when I was on the council, I took digital pictures of buckle sidewalks, pathways that weren't accessible, pathways that weren't ADA accessible, all types of things, and I would submit them to the city manager. Now, we had a city manager at the time that says, you know, George, I really don't have time for a lot of this. But, you know, we have a new city manager now, and I think, you know, this has been an improvement. And the fact is, is that, you know, you all have Facebook, you all could start your own web blogs, and you could put pressure on city staff in a gentle fashion to point out what areas of the city that needs addressing, back them up with some photographs and so forth, and, and get it done. Because I don't like to hear you sit here each year making the same complaint, that, you know, it seems to be, the can keeps to be getting kicked down the road here a little bit. And I'd like to see you be a little more proactive on things that are so obvious. So I applaud the council on having a more healthy discussion about this this year, but I would ask you to, to step up your game a little bit and communicate better with city staff on where you see problems in the city that are affecting the quality of life for the citizens and value for our tax dollars.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on item number nine? Yes, Ms. Alderman.
Just, it's a comment about accessibility, and I've been meaning to talk about it. Over on Madrone, on this side, there's the storage area, and then there's sidewalk, and then there's, it's like three feet of difference between the, the two, the sidewalks. There's no way to, it's, I'm sorry. There's the storage area, and then there's a wooden, wooden bar, and then the next sidewalk. It's not accessible at all, so I just wanted to mention it.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment on item number nine? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll bring it to the council.
Just like to clarify, not complaining about anything actually, or complaining about staff response. Staff is, is well aware of the issues and things that we'd all like to improve. The issue, which should be clear from the staff report, is the issue of funding this, especially in these regions that don't have a methodology where they can be increased from year to year. In terms of broken sidewalks, digital pictures, I can tell you from experience, and I think I could speak for all of us, even without checking, our city manager isn't inundated on a regular basis with these, and this is a good way, and we have good efforts of getting these things done. I'll point out at the last message, although I believe our speaker was not supportive of it, we had a broken sidewalk that we were able to get repaired, and that was done simply through a citizen contact, through a digital picture, and this is how we move forward. So there are, there are things getting done. It's more of a process, like probably everybody in this county right now, finding ways to fund things, being cost-effective, and getting the good work done. So my hat's off to staff, because you are doing a good job with this.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back for a motion, and then keep in mind, we need to make individual motions for each of the properties.
Right, so if anybody needs a break, I'm going to read off ten motions for resolutions in a row, so it's going to take a little while. Okay? I'll take the brunt of it, unless I lose my voice. And I've already, unfortunately, taken all the maps out, so now I'm going to have to reinsert, because some of them have the resolutions on there, so maybe a little slower. So the first one, are we ready? Was there further discussion? Sorry.
Go for it.
Okay, here we go. I will move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, I believe is what it should read, for the Valparaiso Vista subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record show that it's a five-o vote in favor of the first motion.
I would like to move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year, it says 2016 to 2016. I'm assuming it meant to say 2015 to 2016?
That is correct. I think, it looks like it was a search and replace that.
No worries. Just making sure I'm doing it right. So for the year 2015-2016, for the Quail Hollow subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated herein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please show, may the record show that it is a five-o vote in favor of the motion number two.
Slow it down just a tad bit, okay, with your motions?
Oh, I'll try.
Because I'm trying to get through all these. Where am I? I'm here now. I'd like to make a motion, accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Summers subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record show that it's a five-o vote in favor of the Summers property.
I'd like to make a motion, accepting and approving the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Macklin I subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record show that it's a five-o vote in favor of the Macklin I subdivision.
I'd like to move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Sierra Meadows subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the motion. Was that slow enough?
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. I move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Oak Knoll subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second on the Oak Knoll property. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the Oak Knoll property assessment.
Guys really owe me for this.
Yes.
I move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Garden Gate subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated herein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the Garden Gate property assessment.
I thought you were going to say rates or district. Okay, fine. I move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Park Meadows subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second on Park Meadows. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the Park Meadows assessment.
Move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Santeroa Way developments, development, maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated therein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the Santeroa Way assessment. Last but not least.
I know, I'm losing my pages. Here it is. This is the last one? Oh, good. Move to accept and approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 2015-2016, for the Altman Acres subdivision maintenance assessment district, and ordering the establishment of the assessment rates as stated herein.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect, it's a five-o vote in favor of the Altman Acres subdivision assessment. And that concludes item number nine. Congratulations, Councilmember Deloso.
Thank you so much.
Yes. So we'll move on to item 10, introduction of an ordinance amending the Cattati Municipal Code Chapter 10.40 with regard to truck routes. I will again turn to our city manager, Ovid.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, this item is to amend existing chapter 10.40 related to truck routes within the city of Cattati. The, the existing, the primary changes are the existing truck routes within Cattati include Grabenstein Highway, Old Redwood Highway, East Cattati Avenue, and this amends that, those signed truck routes to be, to continue to be Grabenstein Highway, East Cattati Avenue, but only a part of Old Redwood Highway. So the part that would remain a truck route would be Old Redwood Highway between East Cattati Avenue, the hub, and Highway 116, Grabenstein Highway. And it would make the part of Old Redwood Highway between East Cattati Avenue and the southern city limits by Eucalyptus no longer a truck route. And I'll get into the various reasons why here in a moment. The other, the other thing that this does is it cleans up a lot of the municipal language in this particular chapter related to parking and, and some of the weight limits and how they're, and how, how truck routes are established. And some of the language related to pneumatic tires and the city engineer designating truck routes, if there is a structural reason, remain in the ordinance. And like I said earlier, it prohibits trucks over five tons, which is 10,000 pounds, on roads unless they're signed specifically for it, and there are some exceptions that I'll get into in a moment. So as a way of background, the California Vehicle Code provides cities with a general authority for restricting trucks in residential districts and establishing truck routes. In March of this year, this, the city adopted a new general plan, and that general plan are several objectives and, and related policies and actions, including maintaining an updated truck route list and a focus on the hub and adjacent areas as the central public activity area. And I think everyone knows that our downtown, or old downtown, between East Cattati Avenue and McGinnis Circle in particular, is a heavily trafficked pedestrian area. There's a lot of outdoor seating there and just a lot of vehicle and pedestrian activity. On June 9th of this year, the city council discussed the possibility of revising the truck routes within Cattati, and there was, at that time, there was general support on the council for prohibiting truck traffic in Old Redwood Highway between the southern city limits and East Cattati Avenue and the West Sierra Avenue intersection. And this is primarily due to the high volume of large trucks passing through our historic downtown and the related noise, dust, exhaust, and roadway damage that results, as well as the, the high activity level of pedestrians and vehicles, as I just previously mentioned. In the packet, there's also several emails or letters that we received from some businesses and citizens expressing support in this change in the truck routes. And in the proposed ordinance language, I want to point out a couple of things. On page, packet page 169, this is section 10.40.030, Part B, and it talks about parking of any vehicle in a residential district with a gross weight over five tons. It goes on to define those districts. And after some further conversation with our community development director, I propose to strike that one paragraph, because it's redundant with the, the prior paragraph covers what we need. And there's also, in the municipal code, a separate parking section, it's 1736130, that talks about commercial vehicle parking in residential districts. So I think we're covered, and that, that paragraph B is repetitive. And on packet page 171, this is under exemptions. It was very kindly pointed out to me that, that public safety vehicles are not specifically shown here as an exempted vehicle, but of course, they would want to be so, or we would want them to be. So I propose adding another, another item there, where it just says, public safety vehicles such as fire, police, or ambulance services necessary to ensure public safety would be specifically exempted under this. And so with those couple relatively minor changes, I did want it to, I did want to say just in general, how this would work is, once the signs are posted, the, those routes would become designated truck routes. And with that, you know, what that means is that trucks over five tons generally would, would not be permitted to depart from those signed truck routes. There, if they're construction vehicles for a specific construction activity, if they're garbage vehicles, if they're buses, if they're emergency vehicles like we talked about, local delivery vehicles, things like that are allowed off of the truck route, but they're supposed to take the most direct and expeditious route from the truck route to the point of activity or delivery or whatever they're doing, and then back on the truck route. So that would be trucking activity within the city. For trucks that just go through the city and don't stop anywhere, they'd have to maintain their, they'd have to maintain on the truck route, so they couldn't deviate off. And as I think everyone's aware, there's currently significant, I think primarily construction through traffic related to construction trucks and material supply trucks through our old downtown. And so that would be a, hopefully, a significant change for that down, for that stretch of Old Red and our downtown businesses. And in terms of, in terms of phase-in, once, once the, these designated truck routes are signed, what we've been talking about internally is that we would have probably about a month period of time where the police would be doing, we call it a phase-in, where, you know, the police would be pulling the trucks over, but just giving them warnings, not citing them. And then after that, after that, then they'd be cited, and if they got cited, it would be a misdemeanor. And then, of course, like any, like any ordinance, there would be periodic need for enforcement, and I'm sure the people along those roads that aren't truck routes would be more than happy to let us know about people that, that are violators, particularly repeat violators. So with that, I think that's a pretty good, high-level... So with that, I think that's a pretty good high-level overview, but I'd be happy to answer any more detailed or general questions.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it back to council and I was going to just quickly point out at the top of it, the reason why there was a delay between the June 9th, when we first discussed this, and today's meeting is because we had a notice requirement under the vehicle code to do four consecutive weeks of noticing to that trucks. And so just wanted to point that out, that that was one of the reasons for the delay. So.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for pointing that out. I also want to let, let the council know that all of the trucking companies within Cattati were, were noticed on this meeting, as well as some trucking companies that were aware of in the, in the surrounding areas.
Okay, thank you. So now I'll bring it back to council for any comments or questions. Councilwoman Lemon.
Thank you. That was a very thorough overview. I think I got most of my questions answered, but I wonder if we could go just a little deeper on the enforcement plan part of it? Because clearly for something like this, it has a lot of benefits for the public, probably can discuss that more after public comment, but for it to be effective, the enforcement, especially in the first couple of years, is going to be critical. So this new situation is learned and understood by all the stakeholders involved. And so I understand the general idea of enforcement, but in terms of after the initial phase is done, and I, and I do fully support the, at least a one-month warning phase, I think that's great in the noticing. And I'm pleased to see that we have received, to the best of my knowledge, no pushback on that noticing. That's all very good. But I, I'm curious if perhaps on a yearly basis, I know we have hotspots in areas where we do sometimes focused enforcement. The chief might, could probably speak a lot more clearly on that than I can, but I wonder if this could be folded into that so we can from time to time for the first few, few years refocus on that just to make sure that the message is clear that this area of the downtown is no longer a truck route.
So yeah, I would just generally say that the, that the motor officer would be the one that primarily would be enforcing this. Of course, that doesn't preclude other officers from doing it as well, but I'll have the chief talk about the ongoing enforcement.
And good question. And so, yeah, there would be a 30-day grace period, is what I call it. And then after that, well, during that, we can issue warning citations. After that, would you have a traffic officer now? The traffic officer would be watching that closely and starting to write citations that are misdemeanors. I'm sure that will quickly spread, that news will quickly spread. And, you know, there's always going to, we're never going to completely stop it because we're always going to have like new drivers, new businesses. So just like any crime or, or traffic violation, we'll never 100% stop it. However, we can greatly reduce it and we would start with a traffic officer. And as the city manager said, other officers can write those citations too. I think it will, it will greatly reduce trucks going through our city. And if it doesn't, we'll keep on them and we'll keep revisiting this, but I'm confident that it will be greatly reduced.
That answers my question. And I'm just curious, I heard you mention new drivers and that's a good point. I would guess, I, I just want to hear our officers will have the latitude to appropriately give people a break when they're new to the area, new driver, new business perhaps, kind of that same, the idea of you just moved here, you got a month to get used to this, you get a warning, because I, I would, I think that would be the best way for us to do this.
So our officers have discretion?
Good, I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any comments from the side?
I know that we got some letters of support for this. Did we get any opposition?
I've, I'm not aware of any opposition to it.
And, and all the area trucking firms have been noticed?
They were, yeah, we sent the letters out last Wednesday.
Thank you.
All right, any comments from the side? Councilwoman Delaso.
Sure, thank you. And you did answer my questions more, the two were really about communications and if there was going to be some kind of a grace period. So I appreciate that. I, I think it would maybe behoove us if it's doable, maybe it's something an intern could do, but to get, depending on how the vote goes this evening on this issue, if it is indeed in favor to support this, to send just one more notice, by the way, the city council, if it happens this way, city council has approved this new ordinance and just so you know, it's going to take effect approximately, whatever the time period is, I think just one more time. I'm just a little concerned that, you know, a lot of times, letters may come in and they may sit in a business's inbox and somebody doesn't open it for two or three weeks because they feel it's not important. You just never know. And if we have the wherewithal to do that, maybe with an intern to just, I don't want to call it noticing, but because this is sort of final noticing, if you will, one more time, just so you're aware, here's the new regulation. I think that'd be a wise thing if we could do it.
If I may, Madam?
Yes, vice mayor.
You might want to piggyback that on police department letterhead and it might not be thrown in the round bin.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. I, I just, one of them is really clarification. I just want to make sure I understand this properly. So since we've designated Old Redwood Highway between East Cattati Avenue and Gravenstein Highway, East Cattati Avenue and Gravenstein Highway, so let's just take the example of a truck coming up Highway 101 northbound. So this precludes them from taking railroad or West Sierra and coming through town that way. They have to go all the way up to Highway 116 to be able to get out, say towards East Cattati.
So they currently, or even with this change, they, they could take, if they're heading northbound on 101, they could take that railroad off-ramp on the railroad avenue, but they have to go out to Petaluma Hill and then up. Right now, West Sierra is not a truck route, so they, even today, they couldn't take the West Sierra exit. So they would have to, so if they're heading, if they're, I think generally what, what we see is trucks traversing Old Redwood Highway north and south. And in order to do that, they would have to go down Old Redwood Highway to East Cattati to Petaluma Hill and then out or down to Pen Grove or vice versa.
Okay, so that is, that is the expectation, is that they're going to go all the way up to 116 to come into town, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then secondly, on the construction section, it says, "Construction vehicles shall only deviate from the nearest truck route as is reasonably necessary to reach the destination." Who determines what is reasonably necessary to reach the destination? If I'm, say, the trucking company in Pen Grove, which there's a trucking company down there, who's to say what is reasonably necessary that I can't use Old Redwood Highway?
So in terms of, in terms of construction, so if they're, if they're traversing through the city, they're not stopping in the city for any type of construction?
Right, like all, like, let's say, we know that there's going to be a ton more development in Renner Park. Let's say they're going to come up, you know, from Petaluma to get out to Renner Park. And typically, right now, we see them, we, we saw them when there was a lot of work on East Cattati Avenue. They were coming up Old Redwood Highway through town and then down East Cattati. So who determines whether that's reasonable or not for them to get to their destination?
Right, if they're, if, if they are not doing construction work within the city of Cattati, they need to stay on the truck routes, period. If they're, if they're doing a project within the city of Cattati, then they either have a, it's either a, a building, there's a building permit issued or there's a city contract issued. And we know where they're working and they deviate from the truck routes to get to the construction site.
So shouldn't this sentence be eliminated? Because this sentence to me says that if it's reasonably necessary for them, then they can take that route. Just.
If I might, through the chair, having spent a few years thinking about this one, because this actually started back when I was mayor a couple of years ago. The idea with this, and I, I see your concern and it is an area where there's actually some huge human judgment involved instead of something that's a flat A, B, and C, you actually have to find a shade of gray in there. But the whole concept behind this is to get a latitude. If a truck is delivering, it's one thing if you're driving through, bypassing a truck route and going to deliver in Renner Park or even the very far edge of Cattati, it's quite another, what if you're delivering to the back of Ross Street? Or, or some other, the idea is it's a street that's connected or just right off where a logical person, you can make a reasonable argument, I would take that route because I kind of have to take that route because it's right connected. It's almost, it's almost impossible to get there any other way without perhaps making some huge circuitous route, excuse me. So that's the type of thing that obviously it takes some human interface to take a look at. And I think it would be pretty obvious. This is why I was looking for some judgment for our officers, number one, to be able to give people breaks when they're doing something like this, number two, when they're new to the area, but also when somebody is gaming the system, perhaps to be able to point out clearly, ah, this isn't an effective use of this and perhaps inappropriate.
And I would agree with you with, with the other part of, of that construction sentence. It says it's required to perform construction off designated truck routes as demonstrated by an awarded construction contract by the city or a building permit issued by the city. In other words, work within the city and that's the way for you to get there. But then the last sentence, to me, sort of eliminates that by saying, "Construction vehicles shall only deviate from the nearest truck route as is reasonably necessary to reach the destination." Now, it doesn't say that it could be any destination and, and that's what I'm asking for clarification on. But I'm uncomfortable with that last part because it almost sounds like it gives them an out.
Well, and I think, sorry, one, one thing just to point out too, is that if there're folks who have a, a contract with the city, we have a little bit more input and say as far as if we see them taking very strange routes to get somewhere. We have a lot more, hey, we awarded you this contract to do this work and you need to stick to the truck route as much as possible. And also, I know it's, it's awkward, but that, that's a legal term as to the reasonable, reasonably necessary, you then would look at the reasonable prudent person standard. I know it's an odd term, but.
You really kind of want it in there, I think, as protection. I mean, I, I get where it's a gray area, but if you remove it, you're removing that latitude for somebody that might reasonably need to make that deviation, the ability for people then to give that break. And I would, as much as I support this fully and think it'll be a large benefit for the community and want to see it strictly enforced, I'd want to make sure we have the latitude in a case like this to allow somebody that. And it comes down to you have to trust people to be able to do this and you have to trust your employees to be able to do it. I think that's the bottom line.
I just feel it gives them, the construction trucks an out.
But it's only construction trucks doing work within the city limits, so we would actually have oversight because they're doing construction within the city.
Within the city, yeah.
Just, it's just to get clarification, is it, is it the, if I understood you correctly, it's the second sentence in that construction exemption?
Yeah.
Which you're saying could potentially not be tied to the first sentence, like as a standalone?
Potentially, you know, I, I agree, if, if they're doing construction within the city, they need to get wherever they need to get to do the work that they need to do. And I agree with your comment that they should take a reasonable route, but this sort of then exempts them from that quite, you know, boldly in the ordinance.
Right, I mean, I mean, sorry. I, I would, I would agree at, at some level with what councilmember Harvey is saying because let's say there's a construction vehicle, let's say it's a cement vehicle, just to pick on somebody, and they're coming through and they may say, well, I'm going on a job here in Cattati, when in reality, they're going somewhere else, Renner Park, Sebastopol, wherever. Is somebody going, if somebody is, first of all, if an officer is going to pull them over, are they going to ask, and I suppose they would, can I see your construction permit? Oh, my boss didn't give me a copy. You know, there's just, I, I kind of see a crack in the door. It may not be a big deal, you know, but I'm just, I, I'm agreeing with councilmember Harvey on one level that, that potentially could give people an out. And I'm not saying that the language is horribly wrong, but is it something staff would want to possibly make a change to? I don't have any suggestions.
So one of the things Rob and I were, Robin and I were just talking, the, one before it, the local deliveries item, it talks in that first sentence about the route as is reasonably necessary to reach such destination. We could potentially change that second sentence in the construction exemption to replace the "the" at the end right before destination with such.
So that, that would be better? And would it help to put at the end of the word, in both cases, maybe now, at the end of the word destination within Cattati city limits? I mean, doesn't that kind of put the parameters on it too?
Yeah, yeah, that, that would work.
I mean, then, then you don't really have an out, right?
Right.
I mean, you'd have to be in the city limits at that point.
It may be duplicative. I think it's already implied pretty strongly in here, but it can't hurt.
Okay. And then with regard to the other comment about, you know, I think there's, there always will be a truck here and there that, it's just the nature of, of the way it works. But, but the real intent is to stop, is to stop people that repetitively, you know, abuse the truck route.
And we got no comments at all from any of the trucking companies? Is that correct?
We got no comments.
Okay. So if that concludes comments, then I will open it up to the public. Is anybody from the public like to comment on item number 10? Yes, Mr. Berch?
Thank you, Mayor. Mrs. Harvey, you made the argument that I made when they, when you introduced the ordinance. There's enough loopholes and exceptions in this that it's not workable, it's not, it's not enforceable. Now, I'm not here to have you give me any credit for that, but basically, that's exactly what I argued. And also, the reason that many of the trucking firms aren't here tonight is they looked up online the, the ordinance, proposed ordinance, and found the same thing that you did, is there's, there's an out here. There's no reason for them to be here tonight. If you change the language, now you should renotice those, those trucking firms and bring them back down here. There is no large amount of truck traffic on Old Red going through the downtown area. That's a false statement. This new language cleans up nothing. It makes things more complicated. It penalizes big trucks and it discriminates big trucks. Let's be clear what you're doing here. And we're doing this for Mr. Landman. Mr. Landman already stated he wants to sit out on an outside cafe and be free of these big trucks. And I'm sure motorcycles and hot rods and everything else will be next, but we'll get there in time, Mr. Landman, I know. This is an historic truck route in downtown historic Cattati for over 100 years. Trucks have been coming through this town. Where's Prue Draper tonight on the historic value of the downtown truck route? This law is bad for Cattati. There's many loopholes in it. There is very little, there was no public support when you introduced it. So now you've gone downtown and you found some of the merchants that helped you get reelected and said, hey, we need your support on this. And they cowed down. Very, very well done. There was no support for this. We should have one resident from Frog Song. Remember him? What are the fines? We don't know. And I would submit that the police department is going to be constantly be hauled into court, having to defend their citations from these truckers who are going to object to them. And they're going to be arguing this in court, so be ready for the police costs, having to go to traffic court now for all these truckers. And did any of you sit downtown and get the phone numbers off any of the big trucks that came through town so that you could canvass them and give them a call and say, hey, why are you coming through our town? Would you object to this new ordinance? No. You left it to the city manager to make some phone calls. I think you need to table this. I think this is something that is, there's no urgency, Mr. Landman, you need to table this, you need to do this right, you need to contact the trucking firms personally, like real city leaders. Get out there, don't have staff to do this. You're all fully capable of contacting these trucking firms and, and tracking down some of the trucks that come through town, call those phone numbers on the back of those trucks and have a little healthy conversation with them. This is what happens when government overreaches and gets ahead of itself without public support. You've conjured up this public support.
Mr. Berch, your pass, the three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Ms. Alderman, I saw your hand up earlier. Thank you.
I'm having some speech difficulties tonight, so please stay with me. I've lived all over the country, I've lived in other countries, and I've always, whenever there's a truck route, it's close to the, where the original one, there's always an alternative. And you're, you're talking Petaluma Hill Road or the, the other one will be Stony Point. If you get on Gravenstein, you're going down to Petaluma. There's no alternatives here for. There's no alternatives here for the trucks. And what are you going to do? A truck's coming through from out of town, it accidentally goes through Old Redwood Highway, you're going to stop and say, tell them, "Oh, you can't be on the highway?" It's, it's a stupid even one. There's not, how many, you're not looking at the big picture too. How many routes are there up through this county? There's four. And you want to say, "Oh, sorry, Cotati, we can't, you can't go through Cotati because we want to protect our roads." You're going to have all this backlash against Cotati for doing this. It makes no sense. It's just, it's going to drive business away, it's going to, it's just a bad, bad idea. And I don't think you've thought it through. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on item number 10? Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, Council Neil Hancock. And I think the record shows, or at least the record that I read, the staff report, that there was support for this and it's in writing. We do change over time. Cotati is urbanizing. We have got more people, we've done a nice job, I think, in the downtown in making that more workable. As with majority of cities in the world, this also requires that we adapt and ask the, some of the local businesses adapt to that. There are routes around the city, so I very much appreciate that this ordinance will go through. I do hope that it will be an educational exercise for the drivers and that that will be used more to educate them if things are, if they're coming through the city rather than punitive action. So that is there if necessary, I would think, but I would hope the educational side would be the first approach to anybody coming through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on item number 10? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments and bring it back to the council. And just to clarify too, anybody who's making a delivery to a business in Cotati would be exempt from the truck route issue. So yes, Councilwoman Delloso.
A number of statements I'd like to make, thank you. That's the first and foremost, is that this does not impact businesses, it can't send businesses out because all of those vehicles are allowed to continue this route. This is not a historic truck route, it's a historic route, okay? This was pre-US 101. So is there an alternative? That would be US 101. So there is an alternative for these vehicles. And you can sit there and nod no all you want, but it's, I'm sorry, your time is up. I have the floor right now, be polite. And I'd like to say that there was no public support conjured up. It was pointed out, and I was going to say that we had five or six emails dated June 7th and 8th, and those were all in favor of this, and there were zero emails.
Mr. Barich, calm yourself, please. Please continue, Councilwoman Delloso.
I'm going to wait until you're done.
Very good, Sheriff. You're doing well.
And there were no emails or letters that came into the city opposed to this. None, zero. So zero versus five, small number, still a big difference. To say, to say there was no support for this...
Mr. Barich, this is not second grade. Put your hand down. You're done. Your three minutes is up. Thank you. Councilwoman Delloso, please continue.
So again, conjured up, public support, dead wrong on that. To say there's no support, we had letters and emails. Again, I want to emphasize, not a historic truck route, it was a historic route, not just for trucks. Automobiles use this regularly. And whenever 101 was built, I don't know the year off the top of my head, that is an alternative route. And we're talking about large trucks that are not even utilizing the city, but just taking a shortcut. So I guess it's okay to take the tens of thousands of vehicles and cars that are on 101 and let's let them continue to come right through downtown because that's appropriate as well. I don't feel it's appropriate. I think someone does in this audience. So there were some statements made in there as usual by an individual that really are not based on any facts whatsoever. Just wanted to point that out. And I personally have received at least four phone calls or direct conversations with different citizens in the city in the last year, year and a half about this specific issue. They live a block or two off of Old Red and say that the noise is incredibly annoying to them. And it's like, okay, well, that's interesting, you know, we have it on sort of the long term, it's going to come back to the council. None of those people that I've spoken to, none of them had commented on here, but those were people who have been very supportive of doing this exact thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harvey?
I would like to echo, I can't remember who brought it up, but I would like to see some, if this passes, I would like to see some outreach to the different businesses. I like the concept of education. I think that it's important for them to know what is expected, and I think that that gives people the opportunity to do the right thing. I also like the concept of, you know, giving people a warning first so that they are allowed to correct their behavior because I agree, you know, sometimes someone may accidentally come through. And that's not really what the point of this is, is for people that accidentally. There are, I've seen them. There are some folks that just think that this is the shortest way to Roanoke Park construction. And for a while there, the trucks were stacked up going down there, and it was really sad. So with those concepts, I think I could move forward with this.
Okay, thank you. And any comments from the side of the dais? Are we ready to go? Councilwoman Landman?
Lots of comments, although a lot of them have been very ably covered, thank you, to my colleagues. So I think we'll start off by saying, first of all, one comment that was made, that there's no problem with truck traffic in the downtown, and I'm going to have to say, that's just wrong. That's not the case. If you look back, let's roll the clock back a few years and take a look at how this started, what the reasons were for, and what the benefits are, and what the issue is. And so often in the case of human affairs, sometimes it's just habits. We develop habits, and those habits are based on sets of facts and circumstances we live with, and they make sense at a time. But things change around us. People don't always recognize this. In this particular case, many years ago, there wasn't really Highway 101. There was this big grade, there's, well, there was Highway 101, but bottom line, it hadn't been widened. Most trucks coming through Pangrove and wanting to head north or heading back the other way really didn't want to deal with the grade. It was a lot more cost effective and a reasonable thing to do to come through Old Redwood Highway. Even after 101 was moved away from Old Redwood, it was still reasonable. But in the last five years, the citizens of Sonoma County have put an incredible amount of tax dollars to improving Highway 101. There is no reason now to use the tiny downtown of Cotati as a shortcut for outside businesses to go away or be able to bypass the Cotati grade and head north. Now, why is this worth taking care of? Well, there's a lot of reasons, but here's three big ones. First of all, if you look at the downtown, that's probably one of the prizes, one of the best things we have in this downtown, a place where we have good businesses, a solid community. And one of the strongest things it has is this outdoor ambiance for people to sit and eat, and that's what drives most of those businesses down there. It's one of the key things they have. And the constant barrage, or fairly constant barrage of trucks coming through does hurt that. That's probably why there's such strong support from most of the businesses down there for something like this. Secondly, there are the residents. Let's talk about some streets, just in that area, Ross Street, McGinnis, Forno, Lasker, Gloulier, Macklin, Park Street. All of these back up to this, as well as many people who live in Old Redwood in the downtown too that we don't all recognize as, this is problematic for them, the noise that they have to live with, and it's just not necessary when Highway 1 is ready. It's the 21st century, it's time to recognize that and make those changes. It was a historic truck route, but history's changed and times changed. And lastly, of course, there's where the taxpayers pay for that roadway. It makes no sense to have large vehicles from out of town, use that as a shortcut to their advantage and perhaps small fuel cost savings when it denigrates and destroys earlier than necessary that roadway. That's something that people of Cotati shouldn't have to pay for, and I can't see why anybody who lives in Cotati would support that. So that's kind of the background why we're here. Now, I'd just like to wrap up by talking about support for this because this actually didn't start at this meeting, and it didn't start at the meeting just before this. This started over two years ago when I was mayor, and the first time this was discussed was at the Redwood Cafe at one of the evenings with the mayor. That night, I didn't count, but I would guess maybe we had anywhere from 35 to maybe up to 50 people. And I can point out that, other than Mr. Barich, who was in attendance, fortunately for me, all these meetings, there was strong support. There's strong support between people who live here, there's strong support for businesses who live here. Bottom line's a good thing for the people of Cotati, and that's why I worked so hard to do this. And I want to say just what an incredibly good feeling it is to, as somebody who lives in this wonderful town, to be able to look years past and my wife and I sitting in the downtown eating and noticing, gosh, this is a problem, this is a wonderful area, and this is one thing, and be able to a few years later to actually see this improvement. I'm grateful for the support from the community to make this happen, and I want to thank my colleagues in the council too for supporting me and bringing this forward for this small but important improvement for our downtown. I think it's a great thing, and I think you have a sense where my vote's going tonight. So I hope that gives some background for anybody that wasn't here. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to talk to them later.
Vice Mayor Moore?
I have a question for the chief. On the vehicle code, when you talked about it being a misdemeanor, if it's a citation, the misdemeanor can potentially put points on a driver's license? Or no?
Potentially, but I know that was reviewed by the city manager at one point.
So the misdemeanor, if it's upheld ultimately, right, is something that can be transmitted to the DMV, although I can't tell you if the DMV would actually use it to put a point on someone's record or not. That's a DMV process that I'm not familiar with.
Okay. So it's probably up to their jurisdiction, something like that. Or their discretion, I should say.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. I would think that once there's an educational process that the drivers would not really want to incur those kinds of citations, being that that's their livelihood. And then, secondly, having lived a block off of Old Redwood Highway, off of Page Street, on Kingston Lane, and having those trucks come in all hours of the evening with the Jake brakes and the noise that they make and the, you know, diesel fumes that they're spitting and things like that, it's not necessary to be there. I think that it would be appropriate to divert that to a more generally accepted truck route. So I would support this ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So having concluded all of our comments and listening to public comment, I would bring it back to the council for our vote.
I wonder if I might move this one?
Can I ask one more question of staff?
Oh, certainly.
If I could, so under section 10.40.030, you were recommending, and it makes sense, to remove that paragraph B?
That's correct.
So in the motion, just a technicality, do we need to make paragraph C, paragraph B? I mean, I know you would do that in formatting, but do we need to make that motion verbal or?
Or do you just make the motion with noted, with noted changes, as well as the changes that we had remarked to the construction paragraph?
You can make the motion with noted changes. It would be nice to give just a general subject matter, like, you know, remove the repetitive reference to the five tons, any other changes you wish to make in that regard, as long as you put that on the record, then staff can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, because there was that and there was adding the public safety vehicles under 10.40.120, but I'll leave that up to my colleague.
Who's writing furiously and trying to get all these numbers down?
Yeah.
And let's, I'm going to take a spin at this and look for our legal staff and just clarify. We're going to move as stated here, with the exception of removing the repetitive nature of item, or excuse me, 10.40.030, paragraph B, plus the changes that Councilmember Harvey brought forward, and staff clarified with a slight change of language there. So I'd like to move, we introduce an ordinance in men in Cotati municipal code 10.40 with those stated changes.
Through the chair.
Yes.
And the addition of the public safety vehicles.
And that's right, thank you. And I have that written down, and then we got talking about it, and most importantly, with one more round of public outreach.
Right. So I have the removal of paragraph B in section 10.40.030, the addition under 10.40.120 of, under items three and four, adding after destination within Cotati city limits, and then the addition of public safety vehicles to the exempted vehicles.
And I believe that would, that would be my amended motion.
Then I would second his amended motion.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? May the record show it's a 5-0 vote in favor of the ordinance as amended. Now, we'll move on to our regular agenda. Item number 11, adoption of resolution urging the state to provide new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure. And my understanding is this is just a letter that we would send essentially supporting what the League of California Cities was asking to go to Sacramento.
Sir, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There's a, in the packet, there's a pledge form, I suppose you call it, support, fix our roads coalition principles for new transportation funding, that's on packet page 178. And then on 179 is the companion resolution. And as a way of background, in June of this year, Governor Brown called extraordinary session to address the underfunding of California's transportation infrastructure. And then on July 29th of this year, the League of California Cities circulated a petition to support this initiative for transportation funding on behalf of local and state government. And the League of California Cities is working with a broad coalition of local government partners and private industry to support a transportation funding package at the state legislature. And attached, attached to the staff report is a rather lengthy final report, the California statewide local streets and roads needs assessment, which basically quantifies the statewide deficit in transportation funding. And the attached resolution to this item is the request for our support for that petition for the state to provide more transportation funding to help fill that gap in funding. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, so we'll bring it back to the council. Are there any questions or comments for staff on this item? Yes, Councilwoman Harvey?
City manager, did we participate in the survey?
We do, we participate every year. It's an annual process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just in general, supportive of this in the most part. One small part of concern is the use of cap and trade, looking at packet page 181, paragraph five, I think the last sentence, talks about establishing a framework to make appropriate investments, and major good movement arteries can lay groundwork for greater investments in the future that will also improve air quality and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. I would certainly like to see if this process plays out, if I'm supporting that particular aspect, to actually see those quantified. On the other hand, I have some comfort because I know now that there is cap and trade money, unexpectedly, everybody is trying to find a nexus to it, so that's not unexpected. But wanted to be on record about that. Other than that, the concept's good, and there seems to be some interest at the state level of actually making a movement to get forward in this, and I think that would be a huge help to all of us at every level working in infrastructure, so thumbs up for this.
Yeah, and that's actually one of the things that I talked about when I first saw this was, with my background in environmental law, I really dislike cap and trade just in general because it keeps things status quo rather than improving, but I understand that it's a necessary thing, and I understand why it's there. But that was one thing that I definitely noticed when I first read through this. So if we have no more questions or comments for staff, then I will open it up to the public. Is there anybody who'd like to make public comment on item number 11? Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, Council Neil Hancock. And I'd just like to point out on these 100 pages of data here, they're referencing 2008 and 2010, so that was the bottom, that was the fiscal crisis. You know, if you remember, that was the year that Mr. George Barich got elected and refused to actually knowledge that there was a fiscal crisis in the town and subsequently got recor- to actually knowledge that there was a fiscal crisis in the town and subsequently got recalled.
Let's keep it on the item at hand, number 11. Thank you.
Sure, but 2008, and so 2010 is the follow-on year. I think it's just very, I think there's, we should look at a longer period of time. It should be 20 years that's actually in there that's looking at that. I think that they're trying to do something here. We need funding for the transport. There's a big national discussion on that. Yet at the same time, within California, this needs to be tied to the revenue streams. So trying to say that there should be a constant revenue stream that's just devoted to infrastructure, I think is a little bit challenging. So that's just the comments I'd make on the data that's there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on item number 11? Yes, Mr. Barrett.
Also in 2008, I had not been elected to office. I was elected to office in December.
Okay, I directed Mr. Hancock.
I took office in 2009. So I want to clarify the record because my reputation was disparaged here, Madam Mayor.
I'd swayed.
I took office in 2009, and the fact is, Cattati's fiscal emergency was manufactured out of the city manager's office. And thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, that was, okay. So is there anybody else who'd like to actually comment on the adoption of the resolution that we're talking about? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council for our vote. Or a recommendation, rather.
Well, Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to move a resolution urging the state to provide new sustainable funding for state and local transportation infrastructure. And with the aside, knowing that all the things were mentioned, we will be working on through this process.
I would second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, may the record reflect a 5-0 vote in favor of adoption of this resolution. We'll move on to correspondence and pending legislation. I see that there are no items listed, so then we will move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just had one item tonight. I wanted to let everybody know here that the Sonoma County Water Agency is partnering with Daily Axe and Sonoma County Youth Ecology Corps to do free mulching of anybody's yard. So that's free mulch and free labor to do the mulch. So that's, you know, it gets much better than free. And so any customers in the city of Cattati can participate in that and also participate in our, in addition to that, our Cash for Grass program to fund the actual planting and irrigation part of it. And if anybody's interested, I just wanted to point out that an announcement was in the water quality report that recently went out to all of our customers, and it'll be in the forthcoming newsletter. But you also can contact Daily Axe or, there's a sign-up website, it's wateroff.org/no-lawn. So you can sign up there if you're interested in the free mulching. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to comment on the city manager's report?
Can I ask a quick question first before we go to public comment, Madam Mayor?
Certainly.
Just a very quick one for our city manager. I'm curious, could we get an update on the start date for construction in the northern gateway?
Sure, yeah, thank you. So the contractor has announced to proceed for tomorrow. It doesn't mean that he'll be on site tomorrow, but he should be there very shortly after that. We're still working, we're working through the submittals and we're well through those. So before they, before they actually mobilize to the construction site, there's a whole bunch of material submittals, you know, safety plans and all sorts of related things that we have to approve and review and approve before they can show up on site. And that's significantly done at this point. So I would expect, and certainly in the month of August, we'll be seeing some construction activity on Old Redwood Highway.
So we'll see, maybe in the next few weeks, we might actually see things moving out there.
I certainly hope so, yeah.
Good, glad to hear it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Harvey?
One more thing. I noticed that the staff was around putting mulch, and I want to say that they did a great job around City Hall. It really made a really big difference because a lot of that was not looking very good, that plants underneath had died. So the fact that they put that mulch down and made it look nicer, I really appreciate that. I stopped and said something to them when they were out there doing it, but I think it looks great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'll open it public comment. Any public comment on the city manager's report? All right, seeing none, I will close public comments and bring it back to city council reports. So any updates? We'll start to the right, Councilmember Delloso.
No updates.
Thank you. And Councilmember Harvey, I know you touched on the water.
I think that Damian's covered all my water items.
Okay, terrific, thank you. Councilmember Landman?
I'm going to join my colleagues in being briefed this week and saying, no update.
Okay. Vice Mayor Moore?
I don't have an update. I just wanted to add to the announcement regarding the accordion festival and the fact that it's the 25th anniversary of the accordion festival.
Oh, that's right. Terrific. And then the only thing I was going to comment was on June 29th, I went to the League of California's Dinner in Novato, and it was really interesting. We had it at a location where they had a training program for people who were trying to move from homelessness to employment. And it was a great, it was a great setup, so it was interesting. And also, the topic was aging in place. So there's some interesting presentations on that as well. And otherwise, that is it. So I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 9:01 PM. And then we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you very much. So we will be back, but the rest of you can go home. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor?
And if we could have a bio break.
Madam Mayor, how dare you tell me to calm down during a meeting.